Good evening, I am Mayor Jen Wallison and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council's August 15th Special and Regular City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited depending on the number of speakers we have for each item. I would first like to introduce city council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor. I have city council member Betsy Nash. Participating remotely tonight is our city council member Maria Door. And city council member Drew Combs will be joining us in closed session. So city council member Maria Door is participating this evening remotely under Assembly Bill 2449 Just Cause. City council member Maria Door, can you please provide a general description of the circumstances related to the use of AB 2449 Just Cause?
Thank you Mayor Wallison, I'm taking care of a family member.
Thank you. I will now introduce some of our staff present. We have our city manager Justin Murphy, our assistant city manager Stephen Stoltay, city attorney Nir Adhori, and our wonderful city clerk Judy Heron. Not to say the other staff are not wonderful as well. In accordance with Government Code 54953-B2A, when one or more city council member participates remotely, agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call. This evening, the roll call vote will be taken in alphabetical order based on first names. City clerk Heron, will you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Yes, and thank you Mayor Wallison. And again echoing a welcome to our August 15th regular and special city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on tonight's agenda items, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, if participating virtually, we'll ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. If participating in person, we'll ask you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. That does conclude my instructions at this time. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you city clerk Heron. So we're going to start with our closed session public comment. So city clerk Heron, can you please call for public comment on closed session item C1?
Yes, thank you Mayor Wallison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on closed session item C1, closed session conference with labor negotiators, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me. And this will be the final call for public comment on our closed session item C1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you city clerk Heron. So at this time, the city council will adjourn to closed session and we will be reporting out immediately following the closed session. We are anticipating reconvening this meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
All right, having our city council back on our virtual and in-person dais. Mayor Wilson, you may recall the meeting to order.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So, good evening. It's so nice to be joined by some young adults here in chambers and other community members. We are reconvening or recalling this meeting to order. This is the city council's August 15th special and regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note that public speaker time may be limited depending on the number of speakers we have for each item. I would like to reintroduce the city council members and the staff present. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor is here, council members Drew Combs and Betsy Nash. And we have city council member Maria Door participating remotely under Assembly Bill 2449 Just Cause. As mentioned before, our staff present includes city manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Solte, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. In accordance with Government Code 54953 B.2. A., when one or more city council member participates remotely, agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call. This evening, the roll call votes will be taking place in alphabetical order based on first names. So, we are going to begin tonight's open session with Agenda Review. Item F, Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members under City Council Member Reports. Staff will be providing an update to Consent Calendar Item J.7, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the South Bayside Waste Management Authority to acquire real property located at 1245 San Carlos Avenue, Unit E, San Carlos, California. With that, does any city council member wish to pull or modify an agenda item this evening? I am not seeing any hands, so we will move on with G, our report out from closed session. I would like to introduce our city attorney, Nira Doherty, for a report out from tonight's closed session. City Attorney Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no reportable action.
Thank you. With that, we are moving on to H, which is Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment other than to provide general information. I will be calling for Public Comment at the appropriate times for members of the public to address the city council on our agendized items. Those will include the sections Presentations and Proclamations, Consent Calendar, Public Hearings, Regular Business, and Informational Items. So with that, we're moving on to our Public Comment. And City Clerk Karen, can you please call for General Public Comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on an agenda, on an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating remotely, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landlanyery cellphone, please press *9. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk.
Good evening to the esteemed council members. I am L. Detroit Goodwin. I grew up in the Bell Haven area, and I'm here on behalf of the Onetta Harris Community Center. Mrs. Harris, she mentored me along with other community leaders, and my family still owns two houses in that community. And I have to go there pretty much every week in order to help take care of my 91-year-old mom. Sometimes people look at me like I don't belong in the community that I was raised in, and it makes me feel kind of, it hurts, you know? So I am asking you to please not rename the Onetta Harris Community Center to anything but that, because it's pretty much all we have left. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Chester, followed by Kenneth Harris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chester Palisso, and I'm here as a member of the API Caucus, Asian Pacific Islanders Caucus. You know, the academic language in government and all that stuff. I am also here as an American military veteran, as well as a former elected official representing the Bell Haven community on the school board, Ravenswood City School District Board of Education. And I'm very familiar with the FPBC regulations. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to highly recommend you to not change the Onetta Harris Community Center name. I highly advocate for that name to remain as is, because, one, Ms. Harris, I call her Ms. Harris, you know, working with her for a number of years. She's an innovative leader within our community, or better known as Eastern Mellow Park, Bell Haven. Not only that, when I was running the youth program at OICW, Ms. Harris was very innovative to help me get some of these youngsters off the streets, get them on the higher level of education, move on to get married, have kids, and become successful in our communities. So what I would recommend is to remain the Onetta Harris Community, Harris Community Center as is. Don't change it because of some political contribution from some well-known community business. I must share with you previously, as I shared with you. The fact of the matter is, as a veteran and a friend of Paul Cook, who ran Ray Camp, right out of that same area back in the 80s, very successful. Paul was not interested in naming anything about his name or any company that he ran. He was more interested in serving disadvantaged community. That's what the Eastern Mellow Park community is and Bell Haven. So please remain the Onetta Harris Community Center as is, and do not change it for any political reasons, because we're talking about equity and justice. Remaining that name as is, the Onetta Harris Community Center, that is talking about equity and justice. Because if you change it, that becomes a racial profile matter that is exist, you know, existing right now. If you change it, it's not going to remain as the legacy that we want to remain as is. So please don't change it and remain it the Onetta Harris Community Center. I'm sharing that with you because I spoke with some of the veterans and communities. They want to remain it as is without changing it. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening. Take care.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Kenneth Harris, followed by a caller with the phone number ending in 0494.
Good afternoon, council persons. My name is Kenneth Harris. I'm the son of Onetta Harris. This is one of the pictures of her that stood in the...
Mr. Harris, can you please bring the microphone closer to you?
This is one of the pictures of her that was in the lobby for years. It was one that was updated, that was left out for anybody and everybody to get, but one of the local people got the other picture and gave it to us as a family. But Onetta was recognized as one of the history of Mellow Park. And Onetta, you see, Onetta, you have economic currency, as I said before, and you have social currency. Both of them are needed. As a businessperson that ran a successful real estate business for years, I needed social currency, economic currency to pay the bills. I also needed social currency, which was goodwill, the will of the people, to support and patronize that business. And Onetta provided much, much social currency, which is just as important as economics. When the city council named it after Onetta, July 17, 1983, 40 years ago, they named it by unanimous proclamation, as you all know. That has to set a precedent and a standard, a standard which should be upheld and continued and recognized by y'all. I mean, it's got to mean something. To just erase her in this day of eracism, it's just not right. It's not fair. It's not just. It's not the proper thing to do. So what I'm asking you is to continue her name and her legacy. And I think this is good for the community, because when you, when we go to the park, all of us go there, you know, it's a history. My family moved to Bell Haven in 1954. I've been there for a long time. And my son, grandson goes Beechwood. And I too have investments in Bell Haven, and I am involved with Bell Haven. I've been involved with Bell Haven off and on on various levels, on many levels. But, you know, to change the name, and I also understand that a lot of people are saying that Facebook is not interested in changing the name. that Facebook is not interested in changing the name, that the city of Menlo Park is more interested in changing the name, even though I know that, I understand that Facebook might have naming rights as a part of it. And then the proponents, the proponents say, well, you can't get funding if Onetta Harris or some other person is named. Well, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily true. An opponent, the proponents are interested in just their property values, which we all are. But I think that the bottom line is, that name should be, remain Onetta Harris. It should stand for something. Thank you very much for your time, council people.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is calling in from a phone number ending in zero four nine four, and the following speaker will be Greg Goodwin, and this will be the final call for public comment on item H, which is public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. And I'm going to ask our caller if they could state their name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm calling from the Sacramento region. My name is David Wheaton, and I have a long history with Bell Haven and Menlo Park specifically. My parents moved there in 1953, 54, about the same time as Elz Goodwin and Ken Harris. My family, very good friends with the Harris family. I was always mentored by Ms. Harris for many, many years as a youth and as a young adult. There's a couple things to also remember about Onetta Harris is that during the time that she was, before the community center was named after her, some of the issues that she was dealing with and some of the involvement that she had in the community, Menlo Park at the time had a very innovative police department, police chief. And when things were sort of blowing up around the region for various reasons, Bell Haven, which was almost expected to be blowing up because some of those issues, was not, and the primary reason is because Onetta Harris's involvement on the local level and her work that she was involved in with the police chief and the police department at the time. I also served as Menlo Park's Assistant City Manager and Interim City Manager for a time in the nineties, so most of the improvements in Bell Haven occurred under my watch. And some of the naming of some of the buildings that are named now was also during my time and my tenure and some, and during my watch. And some of the things, one of the things that has concerned me about changing the name, even though I am very supportive of what Mr. Zuckerberg is doing, and I appreciate what he's doing for the community, but one of the concerns I have is that it seems like any buildings that have been named in recent years are all by people who are billionaires or multimillionaires. And I'm very familiar with the buildings and names that change. I appreciate their contributions. I think they're very, very important. And I certainly agree with that, but it seems to send a message that unless you're contributing millions of dollars, then you can't be recognized by the community for any other effort. And I just think that's not, that's not a fair, fair way to govern, and that's my opinion. And I want to thank you for your time and thank you for your service as well.
Thank you for your comment. So our final speaker will be Greg Goodwin.
What I have here is a poster that shows, this is from 2011. It was a college and career fair at Onetta Harris Community Center. This is also indicative of what I said in the past concerning Onetta taking children, young people and young adults, and turning them from crime to college and to professional life. This is an example. And basically, again, the neighborhood was in a crime, a crack epidemic at one point, and the influence of Onetta Harris and the programs of the center kept people from crossing the freeway and committing crimes over here. If you don't think that's important, I would really examine the logic of what I just said. These programs at Onetta Harris, we held at Onetta Harris Community Center are of major significance, and so is the name. Her name, the name Onetta Harris is of major significance to the history and the legacy of Bell Haven. And to remove that name would be a grave insult to the neighborhood, Bell Haven, to the black neighborhood, the black community, and to all of the work that was done to serve the communities. Again, she turned criminals into lawyers, doctors, engineers, scientists, transportation experts, nurses, just every profession that you could think of materialized from Onetta Harris Community Center and the programs that was presented. I know I only have a few seconds left. I would say this, I hope that you take this into consideration, because this name is of major significance, and what she's done is of major significance, and what it represents to the black neighborhood is of major significance. I hope you don't turn this into a dogfight and shame the city by discriminating against the Bell Haven community with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you for those public comments. And actually, City Manager Murphy, do you have any updates or information about when the agenda item for the naming of the facility is tracking to come to council?
Yes, Mayor, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I believe it's in the fall timeframe, so I don't think there's a specific date yet, but I think it's the fall timeframe.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to move on to I, which are our presentations and proclamations. We have one presentation this evening, which is the Sister City Annual Update, and it looks like we have some travelers with us this evening, which is so wonderful. Here to make the presentation is the Menlo Park Sister Cities Vice President and Director and our former mayor and council member, Catherine Carlton. Good evening, Ms. Carlton.
Hi. Make sure you can hear me. Hi, how are you doing? So I'll get straight into it, because we don't have a lot of time. What are sister cities? The idea of sister cities originated after World War II as a way of fostering peaceful relations and cultural exchange between different nations. It's harder to be xenophobic and racist when you sit at the same table and you get to know each other as human beings in their own, in each other's homes. And sister cities partnerships work to promote mutual understanding, educational exchanges, and economic cooperation. Beginning as a city-run program in 2013, we formed the Sister City Committee in 2015 to get more people involved to help make the program successful. In 2020, the city council approved a plan for the program to become a community-based nonprofit organization. So the Menlo Park Sister Cities Association, nonprofit 401(c)(3) organization, 501(c)(3) organization, was established in 2021. As an organization, we are a member of the Northern California Sister Cities Association, and I sit on that board of directors too, so that we work together across region and across the state. So if you change to the next slide, Galway, Ireland was our first sister city, and 2013, Mayor Otaki and Galway Mayor Keneely signed the first friendship agreement at our annual State of the City address. Menlo Park was founded when Dennis Oliver and Danny McGlynn traveled from the village of Menlo Park, now Galway, to California and purchased a ranch that we're standing on right now, and they named the ranch Menlo Park. And groups from the Galway people, their sister city group, their government have visited Menlo Park every year between 2014 and 2019. Mayor Otaki visited Galway in 2014, where they put up a plaque to celebrate the relationship between our cities, which is up there. And I visited Galway in 2015, and in 2016, Mayor Rich Klein and Galway Mayor Frank Fay signed full sister city agreements between the cities. In case you're wondering, just for the record, each Menlo Park mayor that visited Galway paid for the trips out of their own pocket. Menlo Park funds were not used for any of these trips. Things slowed down, obviously, over COVID, but we're now talking with a local brewery here and a brewery in Galway to co-create and launch Sister City Beer as a special seasonal beer to celebrate things that we're hoping to have out maybe next, next spring, maybe for, for one of our holidays. We have to see the timing when we can make that happen. We also have plans to do reciprocal tree planting in each of our towns, and we're talking with the government about developing a youth exchange program, similar to the one that we use with Bizan Japan, which I'll tell you about in a moment. Now with the next slide, Changzhou, China, in 2014 and 2015, delegations from Changzhou visited Menlo Park to offer a friendship agreement with us. Also known as the Changzhou National High Tech Zone, it's home to China's largest dinosaur park, museum, and recreational area. We signed a friendship agreement with them in 2015 with a view to establishing a youth cultural exchange in the future. However, there have been changes in their government and COVID, and the friendship agreement concluded over COVID, so we're evaluating this relationship at the moment. We'll keep you posted. Moving along to Kochi, India. Sanjay Vijakumar visited Menlo Park in 2014, representing the Kochi government to suggest a friendship agreement between our cities. Kochi is a historic coastal city in southwest India, has been a base for international trade for almost 1,000 years, and it's known for its diversity in people and religions. Kochi's home to a 500-year-old Paradies synagogue, the oldest active synagogue in the Commonwealth Nations. It's a tremendous place, so much history. If you have a chance, I highly recommend anyone to go there. Through sponsorship secured by the Kochi government, groups of 20 students from Kochi visited Menlo Park in 2017, 2018, and 2019. The delegation stayed at Menlo College, where they completed an innovation summer program with professors and experts in the area. We got some VCs to come talk to them. And the program stopped due to COVID, but we're developing an updated reciprocal program to hopefully do in the future. So moving on to Bizan, Japan. In 2014, Mayor Yoshimura and his delegation visited from Bizan, Japan. Bizan is a picturesque coastal, it's a farming town kind of city in southern Japan. It's beautiful when you go there, because it really is Japan. It really is so culturally rich. It's known for its bizinyaki pottery, which has more than 1,000 years of tradition, is highly collectible. Bizan is home to the first public school ever in Japan, almost 500 years ago, from a forward-thinking samurai, set it up hundreds of years ago, thought it would be good for the peasant children to be educated with the samurai children. And obviously, it was very successful. It's now a museum, and it's used for special educational activities. They actually opened it up for us. You can see in the, you'll see in her picture, Mary will tell you about it. They let us put on special socks and go in on the, and sit down and learn about Confucius. It's an amazing building and an amazing history. The connection between Menlo Park and Bizan was based on a shared appreciation for arts and a cultural exchange, and the Sister City Friendship Agreement was signed in 2015. The city council approved full sister city status with Bizan in 2020, though there hasn't been a signing ceremony yet due to COVID travel restrictions, which just opened up. The two cities have joined an active exchange program, which sends eight to 10 students from Menlo Park to Bizan every other year and vice versa. Bizan delegations of students and chaperones came to Menlo Park in 2015 and 2017. In 2016, 18, and 23, groups of Menlo Park students and chaperones visited Bizan. One of the students we'll speak to tonight. Next year, Bizan students will be visiting us, so if anyone is interested in hosting a Japanese student, please reach out. We would, we would love to set you up with a wonderful student or one of the chaperones. To further explain how the program works, airfare is paid by each individual participant. Each student or chaperone pays their own airfare, and the host city pays for the activities for the visitors. Residents from each city house the visitors during their stay and feed them breakfast and sometimes dinner. And in Menlo Park, student delegates are chosen through an essay competition, though we ensure that the students from across Menlo Park, from Sharon Heights to Bell Haven, are included in every trip. Menlo Park Sister City Program sponsors the airfare of one person in each trip to ensure availability and equity in terms of it being available to the students that are deserving and really want to be able to go on the trip. A special shout out to Boy Scout Troop 222, who helps us with the welcome barbecue party in the park for Bizan students every year. Also, La Dura Travel, Daily and Realty, Mama Cocos. We have so many fantastic organizations, businesses locally, that step up and sponsor our events when they come to town. And the students tell me that the experience has been life-changing for them. As an example, one student who went on our first trip to Japan, just graduated from university, she speaks Japanese now, and she's actually talking to the Bizan government about taking a job there as a teacher. So I'd like to introduce Mary, would you like to come on?
And she will tell you from the student perspective about our trips.
Thank you all so much for having me. My name is Mary Engelkammer, and I was one of the students on the 2023 Sister Cities Association exchange trip to Japan this summer. This trip was an incredible experience, and I'm so happy to come here today and tell you all about it. Next slide, please. To begin with, our week-long exchange trip helped us to foster a deeper understanding of other cultures and people. Through living with local host families, attending classes with students, and participating in cultural activities together, we were able to form meaningful connections and learned to appreciate cultural similarities and differences. Next slide, please. Our sister city Bizan is a small town in Okuyama Prefecture, known for its traditional bizinyaki pottery. While there, we were able to participate in a pottery class taught by experts, stop by local shops, and explore the kilns and studios of the resident potters. One highlight of our week was being able to create our own Bizanware, which is currently being dried and kiln to be sent to us. Next slide, please. Okuyama is the capital city of its namesake prefecture in western Japan. We were able to visit the 16th century Okuyama Castle, called Crow Castle, for its black exterior, and the Karakuen, an iconic and beautiful garden. Additionally, we had a day trip to Hiroshima and visited the Hiroshima Peace Memorial Museum, dedicated to documenting the August 6, 1945 atomic bombing there during World War II. Throughout the trip, we experienced traditional Japanese culture by staying with local host families in Bizan. We were able to eat meals prepared in the traditional Japanese style, get to know our families, and experience firsthand what life is like in Bizan. This was one of my personal highlights, as I got to prepare takoyaki with my family and sleep in a traditional Japanese house with tatami mats. We also got to visit the local elementary and middle schools there and take interactive classes with the students, providing a great opportunity for cultural exchange. We were taught how to write the Japanese character for harmony with the traditional brushstrokes, as well as our names. Meeting the local students allowed us to make new friends and gain insights into daily student life there. Some of our learnings and takeaways from the trips were experiencing traditional Japanese culture through visiting temples, shrines, and making bizinyaki pottery. Also, learning about Japan's history through visiting the Shizutani School, the first school in Japan. the first public school in Japan, as Ms. Carlton previously mentioned, along with other historic sites. Also, forming strong relationships through bonding with our host families, students, and Japanese staff and volunteers throughout the week together. Overall, this trip was an incredible experience, and we would like to thank our hosts in Bizan for welcoming us to their schools and homes and everyone else who made this trip possible, including the city of Menlo Park and the program. The cultural exchange and new friendships we formed on this trip will stay with us for a lifetime. Thank you. I think it's time for the Q and A now.
Do you have any questions? Oh, I forgot to mention, unfortunately, very, very sadly, this program wouldn't exist without Kristy Holtch, who passed away last year. And so we have an opening on our board that we are currently, it looks like we're filling now. I was really moved that when we went to Japan, they had a whole ceremony for her. And they even had it on Japanese TV news, talking about how fantastic she was and about her passing. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank and recognize Kristy because I can't tell you how invaluable and how amazing she is. She was a force. So I don't know, do you have any questions?
I think we're all feeling our hearts warm, learning about your adventure in Japan and the ambassador, the way you represented our city and the youth in our city and made us proud. It looks like an incredible experience, and it's nice to bring the message of friendship and peace around the world. And I know it was hard for the city council to kind of spin off the sister city organization from living within the city to becoming its own five oh one C three, but it's really heartening to see the work flourish and these friendships continue. And so I just wanted to thank you for being such mature and graceful and inquisitive travelers. And we hope that future students can continue to travel back and forth to have these amazing experiences. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments?
The Sister City Program calls the students citizen diplomats, and they were absolutely diplomatic. I can't tell you how proud I am and amazed at how, really, you guys conducted yourselves perfectly. And it was really my honor to help facilitate you guys coming.
I mean, you can really see from the pictures how the students and the participants really just were in the moment and there to absorb. Sometimes in this day and age, we all want to talk and be the ones to tell everybody how we are and how our world is. But it looks like you really kind of were just sponges and taking in another experience. And for that, I think the world will be stronger if we all remember to do that more. So congratulations on a successful journey, and thank you for coming in to tell us about it.
Yeah, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Carlton. Thank you. So again, it's nice to have, for those of you who are tuning in at home, we do have a group here that travels. So we appreciate you coming in to share your photos and your stories. And like I said, it's very heartwarming. A lot of what we do up here is a bit tedious, and seeing beautiful pictures of Japan and hearing about friendships being formed is beautiful. So with that, we are going to move on to some of our more serious. Did you want to take, Ms. Carlton, did you want us to take a quick photo with the students? Or just while you're all here, since you all came down? I think that would be appropriate if the city council went down and took a photo with our travelers. So thank you all for bearing with us as we do this.
Bizan may come with the students next summer to sign, to do the ceremony, to officially sign the sister city.
One sec. I didn't do anything. I didn't send three kids. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to the business of the city now with our consent calendar, which is J. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. To introduce, oh, I'm sorry. We are, as mentioned earlier, there is an update to J seven. And to introduce that is our management analyst, Joanna Chen. So Ms. Chen, can you please provide the update for J seven, which was regarding the SBWMA purchase building? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and members of the council. I'm Joanna Chen, Management Analyst in Public Works. Here with me, I have SBWMA Executive Director Joe La Mariana, who would help provide an update to the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council members, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Assistant City Manager. Hello, Stephen. We used to work together in the Office of Sustainability at the county. I am here to give an update. We prepared a staff report that makes a strong recommendation to purchase a new office for our administrative team. Like many organizations these days, we found that our lease was not renewed. So for the last year, we've been looking for a lot of different options. We came across a property that looks like it's a great fit. And the reason why I'm commenting right here, right now, is we found out late yesterday that there is a math error. And they're not my finest hour. And if there's a math error here, I'm the executive director. I take full and complete responsibility for it. I'm very happy to say that even with the error and the correction, it's still a very compelling case, and I would ask your strong support for it. We have four of our member agencies have approved it. Tonight would be the fifth, if you're so inclined. And we need eight out of the eleven to make it official. And then we would release that contingency from our sales contract. So.
And do you have that updated number?
The updated number is one million, four hundred and sixteen thousand and ninety-eight dollars. So in the staff report, it's overstated in terms of the economic benefit, which is, in the staff report, it says two point two million dollars. There was a down payment that was not factored in properly. And when we backed that out of the transaction, it's still a one point four million dollar favorable transaction when you talk about lease versus, excuse me, buying versus leasing. So it's one point million dollars favorable to the ratepayer. So it's still a very compelling argument, and I ask your consideration.
Thank you. So to clarify, then, the purchase price remains at one point seven million.
Correct. It has nothing to do with the purchase price.
Over the thirty-year mortgage.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, yeah.
Are there any questions or comments about that item or any? Oh, actually, we need to call for public comment. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on our consent calendar items, J one, city council meeting minutes. J two, ordinance adoption related to safe storage of firearms. J three, ordinance adoption related to community amenities value for bonus level development projects. J four, an agreement for on-call tennis court repair services. J five, a resolution executing an MOU between Menlo Park and Caltrain for the San Francisco Creek embankment stabilization. J six, a resolution to submit an application for Measure A and W highway program. J seven, a resolution in order to acquire real property at twelve forty-five San Carlos Avenue. J eight, a resolution approving fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three twenty-four investment policy for the city. And J nine, receive and filing of the investment portfolio as of June thirtieth of this year. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a land-linery cellphone, you can press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, J one through J nine. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So at this time, are there any council questions or discussion on any of the consent calendar items? Councilmember Nash.
So I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Combs.
I'll second that, even though, Joe, you guys didn't move to Menlo Park, which is a great place to buy property. So, but I won't hold that against you. I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash and a second by City Councilmember Combs to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, will we do a roll call vote? City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in this evening. All right, so we are moving on to our public hearing. Public hearings are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. Tonight's public hearing is K one. Consider and adopt resolutions to amend the City of Menlo Park General Plan, Circulation Element, and El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan to add an alley designation under the Local Access Street Classification and allow for the city council to consider closing public streets within the Main Street and Local Access Alley Street classifications to vehicular traffic. And to introduce this item is our planning manager, Kyle Perata. Good evening, Mr. Perata.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wilson and members of the city council. Just give me one minute, and we'll get the presentation up. All right, thank you. So one quick update. So I recognize that the July twenty-fourth date is a holdover from the Planning Commission presentation that I worked off of. So this is for the August fifteenth city council meeting. So a staff's presentation regarding the proposed general plan and specific plan amendments to enable the city council to consider street closures. And so I'll give a brief overview here. So if I can go to the next slide. So this evening, a brief agenda here for the city council. The presentation will start with a quick background on the street closures and the relationship of the general plan amendment to the proposed streetery program, which is up later on the agenda this evening. And then we'll go into the proposed general plan and specific plan amendments. Really, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, these are amendments to allow for the consideration of future street closures. Want to make it clear, it's not the actual street closures. We'll get into that in a little bit detail later. And then this evening, the city council's review and action would be to consider and adopt a resolution approving the proposed amendments to the general plan and specific plan. So if I can go to the next slide. So a little bit of background here. So the city is in the process of developing an outdoor dining, or commonly referred to as a streetery program. As part of that program, the proposal would allow for longer-term outdoor dining, really to enable the temporary outdoor use permits that are in place currently downtown to continue longer term. So as part of that process, the city council held a study session in February of this year. As part of that discussion, the council identified an interest in potentially continuing the closures that are currently in place on Santa Cruz Avenue and Ryan's Lane to allow for the expanded outdoor dining opportunities. As part of that, staff determined that the street closures would require amendments to the general plan and specific plan to enable the council to consider through separate resolution whether or not to close those streets. And so that's why we're here tonight, as part of the amendments that plan to provide that flexibility. At the July twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed amendments for both the general plan and specific plan. If I can get the next slide, please. Okay, so the proposed amendments to the general plan and specific plan. So what these amendments would do is to provide the city council, as I mentioned, flexibility to consider street closures. Specifically, the amendments to the general plan would allow for the council to consider street closures in the Main Street classification of the city's circulation element and also in a subsection of alleys, or excuse me, local access roadways, which we're calling alleys in the modified Table Two of the proposed amendments. So these would apply to narrower public streets, twenty feet or less. One that we're looking at here would be Ryan's Lane. So those are the types of streets that would be considered alleys under the Local Access Alley Classification. These amendments would then allow the council to consider these street closures on Main Street, as well as any other street designated as a local access alley within the city. Currently, for Main Street classification, it's only Santa Cruz Avenue. There are a few other streets that would be local access alleys besides Ryan's Lane. The amendments would be limited to minor circulation changes and modifications to public space in this downtown specific plan, but would not increase the development potential. It is important to note that there are amendments to the general plan and specific plan, really for internal consistency. So the general plan amendments to the circulation element allow for the street closures. Most of the specific plan amendments are to allow for, to create that consistency between the two plans that are in place. If I can get the next slide. So this is Figure Two of the general plan. I realize it's difficult to see on the screen here. But for context, this is the city's circulation map. And in red, on Santa Cruz Avenue between El Camino Real and University Drive is Main Street, street classification, and then the gray streets. So the not streets that are in the bolder colors are the local access streets throughout the city. And if I can get the next slide. So as mentioned previously, the recommended actions, there are two actions. So there's two separate resolutions. It would be to approve amendments to the general plan circulation element. That's an attachment A. And approve amendments to El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan, attachment B, to allow for the council to consider street closures at a future meeting. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perata. At this time, I think we will just jump straight to opening the, actually, are there any clarifying questions from the council before we open the public hearing? Okay, then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to... Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our public hearing item K1, consider and adopt resolutions to amend the City of Menlo Park general plan circulation element in El Camino Real downtown specific plan to add an alley designation under the local access street classification and allow for the city council to consider closing public streets within the main street and local access street classifications to vehicular traffic. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlany or cellphone, please press star nine. If participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. And this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item K1. If we do have one hand raised. So our first speaker will be Alex Beltramo.
Hello? Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Alex.
Um, sorry, actually was planning to come in. I didn't think that things would go this fast. So, uh, uh, Mayor, uh, City Council members, I'm Alex Beltramo. I live on Mill Street. Uh, regarding the street closure on Santa Cruz Avenue, I, I, I know you have a quandary. Uh, on the one hand, most of the businesses want the road reopened. And, um, uh, on the other hand, most of the residents you've heard from wanted to remain closed. Um, so why the discrepancy? You think businesses would be on the same page as their customers? I think the answer is that the residents you've heard from are passionate and vocal, but they do not necessarily represent the larger community of Menlo Park residents. Uh, downtown serves 30,000 Menlo Park residents, the vast majority of which never write to council nor attend meetings. It's very possible that there are thousands of people that do not like the roadblocks, but given that this was a pandemic, pandemic measure, they're not inclined to try to let you know about it. So I just ask that before you redefine our historic Santa Cruz Avenue to be something that is well, not an avenue, that you first hired, uh, an independent research firm to survey, uh, randomly chosen residents. Only then will we learn if the silent majority prefers a plaza in the street or an open road. Uh, while I'm here, I'd also like to praise everything that has been done to put, um, the 600 block to use while it was closed to traffic or has been closed to traffic. The Herculean efforts of Bistro Vita and the Chamber of Commerce brought a breath of life to many people during the pandemic, and I'm sure those people uh, will be forever grateful for that. The 600 block has been a bridge to a better time. But we have reached that better time. Menlo Park is now vibrant and flourishing throughout the downtown. It's filled with streeteries and plazas and more good stuff is on the way. Continuing the road closure is not needed to activate the downtown. You have already activated us. Please give us our avenue back and let us prove it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Elias Blawi.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Staff. Elias Blawi, longtime Menlo Park resident. Uh, my, I thought about this topic for a while and decided finally to make an appearance, um, about the subject. Um, a couple of comments. One is, I, I think it's past time. Um, the, generally, this stuff should be removed. Um, I would tell you, it's a very practical matter. My wife says, I don't go to downtown Menlo Park anymore. I can't get through. It's as simple as that. In, in the subtext here, we're also picking whether you realize it or not, winners and losers. Why are unique restaurants on Santa Cruz Avenue subsidized? Um, through additional space? That doesn't compute to me. It really never computed to me for this whole program. I would tell you, I, we actually now frequent only one Menlo Park restaurant and that's the successor to Su Hong. They're not on the dole. Um, well, why is that? It just doesn't add up to me. We don't go, we tried Camper once. I look at Camper and frankly, I see a whole street full of stuff down the side that shouldn't even be there, including a smoker. Why are we giving a parking space to a smoker? We have street furniture there which is obstructing view standpoints um, for pedestrians at Camper and to the right of Amiches. When I, it is difficult to see pedestrians as they emerge from the edges. Three years later, I say, you know, enough. It, it served its purpose. Um, I used to patronize, by the way, um, Left Bank and the Bistro. No more. Too hard to get to. We go to Redwood City. Those are the practical consequences of what has been put forth here in our town. It's made it particularly, I think, from the west Menlo side because of the, the street closure being eastbound, much less accessible. So uh, then the final comment I would make is actually about revenues. That was deeper in the staff report. So we're also proposing revenue deferral, subsidization, whatever you want to call it. What, why? On the one hand, we say at a very big picture level in the city of Menlo Park, we have ostensibly, we have revenue problems. We're thinking about additional taxes. In this breath and in a hundred other breaths, we're giving things away. We're handing things out. I do think, you know, small businesses do, you know, should be supported, but there's also, you know, it, where's the landlord in all of this? Um, we are providing free rent and reduced rent and reduced fees for purposes that I think, um, you know, don't have another party at the table, the ultimate landlord and owner. So I would recommend that you discontinue this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to Mr. Beltramo and Mr. Blawi. And I know we received another email that, um, was from someone that also wanted to open up the streets to vehicular traffic. So I just want to acknowledge the receipt of that email, and I'm sure all of us, um, on the dais have read that. Um, so I will now close the public hearing and open, uh, this topic up for city council discussion. Um, is there anyone who would like to speak first? City Councilmember, uh, Nash?
So the item before us tonight is strictly to put in place the ability to close it. The decision to close it is actually going to be at a future meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Um, and just following up on City Councilmember Nash's question, you are proposing these regulatory actions in anticipation of a future vote to close it because we had a previous study session where the council reacted favorably towards, um, this action.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. That's correct. We're proposing this to allow the council that flexibility to have that discussion at the appropriate time, whether to close or open the roadways.
Thank you. So just, um, for members of the public who are tuning in, we're kind of in this midpoint in this process where we've given direction to, um, prepare our city for a potential um, action, and this is enabling that action at a future date. I just wanted to let everyone know that this is kind of a technical step in order to get to the ultimate action. Um, Councilmember Dower?
And one other clarification I'd love to make or hear here is, uh, it reads about temporary, long-term or permanent basis. So there might be variety of uses. And the only permanent basis conversation that we've had as a council has been about the Bon Marche Bistro Vita section of it. Is that correct? About permanent closure, is it just about that?
Ryan's Lane, uh, next to.
Thank you.
Um, but I do believe that these resolutions would enable future actions beyond that, although none of them have been currently proposed to date, if I believe. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. So if these amendments are adopted by the city council, uh, the council would have flexibility to look at other segments of Main Street to potentially close on a temporary, long-term or permanent basis. And even the current closure extending it, uh, the council through that future review and action would have the ability to determine, you know, design, timing, um, you know, durations for that closure. Um, those are the things that the council can deliberate on at that time. And then likewise for the local access roadways, there would be other fewer. There's a handful of roadways that would uh, meet the local access alley designation that staff's recommending, uh, besides Ryan Lane.
Thank you. Councilmember Dower, was there something else? Your hand was up. But it might have just.
For any other questions before sharing a comment?
Um, please go ahead with more questions.
Oh, I, I have no more questions, but if.
Questions.
Okay.
Um, does anyone else have any additional questions? Um, I actually have an additional question for staff. Um, I know when we were reviewing speed limit, this is tangentially related. We were looking at speed limits, um, oh, like a month or so ago. There was a note in the staff report about a 20 mile an hour speed limit for the downtown Main Street, this is area. Um, and I just, um, I'm very much in favor of that and even enhancing the signs to say something like, welcome to downtown slow zone or something friendly. Um, is that, do you need additional direction for that type of? Is now a good time to give that type of direction to pursue that? Or is that not at all related to what we're talking about tonight?
So I, I think our assistant city manager gave me a signal to hunt it over to him.
Um, we are happy to take, uh, feedback on that. That would be a separate ordinance that would be brought to council at a future date. So.
Okay. So I'm very interested in bringing that back. If I see thumbs up and nods up here. So I know at least three people, um, were in favor of that. And another one. Okay. Yeah. Um, okay. Any other questions about what we're doing or comments that anyone would like to make? Uh, Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Um, just a, uh, question, and I actually wish we were listening to both K1 and the streeteries together. Um, cause my comments are actually looking at the downtown as a whole. Um, but my, um, question is, in reclassifying the streets, if we wanted to, um, change the circulation or just have a one-way street, would that be something additional or would that automatically come to the, in the reclassification? Or that could be done? Is it a two-step process or one step?
Yeah. So that's a great question. So just to clarify, so what we're, what staff is recommending are amendments to some of the text related to how the Main Street functions, um, to allow for that closure to vehicles, um, with appropriate bike and ped circulation. It's not reclassifying Main Street as a, a different type of street. So I want to just clarify that. I think in terms of the circulation, one-way, two-way, I think that's something that, uh, the general plan itself does not dictate. So that is a, a conversation that can be had within the confines of the current general plan circulation element and, and wouldn't be affected by this, uh, review of these amendments tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
So we've asked some great questions. Um, anyone have any thoughts about the action? Uh, Councilmember Dower?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm reflecting back on the conversation we had about the Bon Marche Market and Bistro Vita and that open space. And we heard so many folks that were really excited about the opportunity to gather outside, the opportunity to have a space for young people to come and sit and be in our community along with people of all ages. And I'm excited to support this, uh, so we can continue having a gathering space where people of all ages can, can come and appreciate downtown. Um, I also appreciate that the openness of this, uh, change could allow us to explore other things like having a block party or a street fair or an open street where people can just come together. Um, and so the opportunity to create this avenue for future conversation, uh, excites me and interests me. And I think it will help community cohesiveness. It'll support public health because it'll get us walking and wheeling. And it can also highlight and support local businesses. So I am in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dower. Um, Councilmember Nash?
So I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Councilmember Dower stated and am wondering whether that was a motion. In which case I'm happy to second it.
It would be a motion. Thank you.
Um, so I'm hearing a motion and a second, um, to approve, would that be both of the resolutions before us this evening?
We'll take, uh, each resolution separately. So the first one is amending the circulation element of the general plan.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Um, so is there, I believe some folks want to speak still. So Councilmember Combs?
Yeah. And so again, we're just, this is just a motion on K1, the, the public hearing, correct? And so, um, I, I, I want to say that, um, I hear you, Mr. Blawi, and, and I think that it is a legitimate and valid discussion that we, as a community, need to and must have. Um, and what we're doing now is making it, uh, uh, possible for us to have that conversation. Um, because again, I appreciate that, that, um, you, you know, you see downtown and it has been inaccessible. Um, a lot of people see it now as being more accessible. And both of those positions are valid, right? We're all residents here and in this community. And, and I do think that, that it's, it's time that we do have a, you know, a full-fledged discussion about what we want uh, Santa Cruz to look like, and we will disagree, right? Um, we, we, there is much disagreement about what Santa Cruz should look like, but I think it's, we've been talking about this debate for as long as I've been involved in city government for a decade, and I'm pretty sure it certainly predates me. And, and I think now it's time to have that discussion in full about what, 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 um, what Santa Cruz should, should look like in the future. And, and I think this lays the foundation for that. And so I'm, I'm supportive.
Um, can I ask a, a question of you, Councilmember Combs? Um, I, I appreciate that, um, comment. I'm wondering what you have in mind for a community conversation about this. Are you thinking outside of a council meeting?
No, I actually was, I was just as part of the council consideration.
Okay.
Although I'm not opposed to, if that's a direction that there is interest in going in.
Okay.
Um, but that's a, that's how I understood it, like.
So that there will be a future agenda item where people, it'll be noticed and people can come in and opine on one way or the other.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And we'll have a very specific, like, plan or, or options about like how that looks, whether it's opening up, reopening up Santa Cruz or whether it's not, or whether it's something more, more significant. Um, as, as, as far as, as, you, you know, dialing towards uh, additional pedestrian space and accessibility. Um, again, that, that's all stuff that, as I understand, is a future discussion. But it can't happen unless we make some decisions here.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. Um, Vice Mayor Taylor, was there anything you wanted to say? Um, so I, um, agree. Um, I think this is one of those issues where reasonable people can, um, want different things. Um, and, um, I hear, you know, the desire from, um, Mr. Beltramo and, and others who have written in and really advocated, um, for, for one way. I think it's challenging. Um, I, I know a lot of times it would be great if we could poll the entire city for, for many decisions that we make. Our burden is to make these decisions, um, sometimes based on the information that's just before us. And I want to assure, um, the public that, um, it's not just, I would think we are, um, more sensitive to who we hear from and how to evaluate those comments um, than just like a popularity contest. I think we take a lot of factors into play about kind of where we're headed as a city, what we're trying to accomplish, who's speaking out for what reasons, the motivation, um, how everything interplays. So, um, even though this is our job is to kind of get the sense of what we think is the best decision for the city. And then ultimately, um, that's why we get elected. So if folks think we're not making good decisions, then we don't get reelected. So that's kind of how local government works. If we stop and, you know, are constantly asking everybody what they want to do all the time, then government will move even slower than it does. Um, no offense to our hardworking staff. Um, so I also, um, I'm going to be supporting, um, this and we will be having, um, a future action item about this. I also just want to, um, mention that, um, I know that, um, the, the plan for, in terms of safety, because I know circulation and safety is a concern of all of ours, especially with the cyclists. Um, and the middle school is starting next week. And there's been conversations about, um, the tables being moved over and space being accommodated, hopefully, um, on the sooner side. So I just wanted to, um, acknowledge that that, that that's something being discussed and hopefully we'll, we'll see a a place for the kids to, and all cyclists to bike by sooner than later. And hopefully we'll, we'll see a, a place for the kids to, and all cyclists to bike by sooner than later. So uh with that, there is a motion and a second on the table. Were there any other um comments? Councilmember Nash?
I have a question for the city manager. I believe I read in the staff report that the, this is coming back on the August 29th for a decision. Is that correct? Or perhaps that's with the next um agenda item?
That's correct. We have a resolution uh regarding the street closures planned for the August 29th meeting.
Thank you for daylighting that, Councilmember Nash. So that's this community conversation being held as the representatives of the community uh will be happening at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Just a, a calendaring note, we do have another meeting in between, which is a special meeting next week to talk about downtown zoning. So then in two weeks, we will be returning to discuss um this topic. And then I also um note that um there's potential future actions that may be taken or, or to enhance that, if, if the street does remain as it is now, to enhance that kind of plaza experience, um whether with uh different street furniture or kind of elevating that feel. So that, that is another thing that may be coming back to us as well in the future. Um, Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. Um, in an effort to have the, our intention um for downtown's vibrancy to be um cohesive. Um, I actually would like to see, not sure how to say this, but what I would like to see, knowing that the agenda item is coming for the 29th for a street closure. So I, I just felt like it was going to come a lot later and not sooner. And so, and then having the downtown zoning, so now we're, the regulation we're dealing with today, then the streeterries today. Next week, it's the downtown zoning, and then after that, it's a street closure. And I see it all as one. Um, they're all pieces to the entire puzzle. And so, but we're not seeing it in that way. Um, so I don't know what we could do for that, and I'm not asking you to delay the street closure. Um, but just based on the public comment, um, I'm concerned that we won't have enough time to get enough input for folks who want to see something happen with downtown, but don't have time to actually provide that input because things are happening so quickly. So that's my concern, and not that I will not support this, but I'm just concerned that the, our plan for our August meetings have a lot of agenda items that are related to downtown zoning, vibrancy, like they're all connected. I see them all as being connected.
They all absolutely are connected. I do think these have been ongoing conversations we've been having. Um, I've been, before I got on council with all of you during the pandemic and everything. Um, and I know everyone got a postcard about um downtown in the mail. And hopefully all the residents got that about the study session last night, the planning commission and, and um next week at city council. Um, do you have any proposal of, or idea of how we can better?
At the moment, no.
Yeah.
Um, but this is something that can possibly be discussed as a part of the downtown zoning next Tuesday, possibly. I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I think kind of going back to our role um is trying to connect those dots in, in our mind and hold all these um separate agenda items as a big picture. So um I'm sure when you're thinking about it, you're, you're not just thinking about the downtown closure. You are thinking about the downtown zoning. And, and so that's kind of the, the lift again that I think we have on our table, on our, on our thing. Yeah. Um, Councilmember Nash?
So I do think they're all very much interrelated. Um, but I see tonight's agenda items as really setting the framework for and allowing us to be able to go forward and make these decisions. Um, K1 is about the circulation. Um, L1, which we'll be discussing shortly, is actually putting an ordinance in place that'll allow us to do the streeterries, outdoor dining areas. Um, and then we'll actually make the decision on that next um in two weeks, as we've been discussing. Um, I think that we've had, very honestly, as had been said, years of discussion and input on this. So I don't think it's something that's being um made in a very, um, I think it's, it's been a very well-thought-out, long um coming decision. Um, so I do think there's been a lot of discussion and input into it. And then the discussion next week um with the downtown plan. Um, that is, as everyone knows, is part of the housing element, um which we are on a very tight timeline for. Um, we have to make the decisions on the zoning by January um this next year, or we will be out of compliance with um the housing element. And so while um I attended the, or listened to the planning commission last night, there was lots of discussion about how nice it would be to have um more input to really do outreach. Um, the truth is that we are really up against a timeline at this point, and we have to be moving these items forward. And I really appreciate how quickly staff has been able to turn these around and get them in front of us because it's um of utmost importance. We've seen two building, um builders remedy projects come forward. We need to get these items all in place, as I think we all know. And so um I see next week um as really something that has to happen very quickly to um be compliant for a housing element and really maintain local control of our city in the planning.
Okay, I think we're getting a little off topic, and we have a motion and a second on the floor. So are there any other comments related to uh Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, not a comment, just a question. I, I had thought at one point someone told me to do this, we would need to do an EIR. Is, is that, did I mishear that? Um, which is likely, or do we think we needed EIR at one point and now we don't?
Uh, if I may respond specifically to the street, the amendments to the general plan and specific plan?
Well, then, leading into what we're going to be doing next, and then ultimately what we're going to be doing in, in, in a few weeks as, as it relates to like the streeterries and, and actually making some of the decisions that were made uh during the state of emergency related to COVID permanent, I, I thought that we were going to have to do an EIR, but.
So I, I can.
No one's.
I can respond to it.
So maybe not.
I can, I can respond to some of that. So the uh, for the amendments to the plans, uh, city staff did evaluate these amendments um against the certified environmental documents. So the EIR is for the specific plan as well as the uh general plan. You know, staff did evaluate and, and found that there were no additional impacts or any changes. And so staff prepared an addendum to those environmental documents. Those are included in, in the staff report um as part of the record for the project in terms of identifying that there aren't any additional impacts with these street closures. So I think that there was a sequo process for it, but it, but it was not an EIR. It was an addendum to the EIRs, the each certified EIR for each respective plan.
Good question. Um, any other comments or can we vote on the uh motion? And second, that is on the table. I think, uh, City Clerk Karen, can we please move to a vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Dorr and a second by City Councilmember Nash to adopt a resolution amending the circulation element of the general plan to modify the street classifications in the general plan circulation element to incorporate an alley designation under the local access street classification and allow for the city council to consider street closures, closures within the main street and local access classifications. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
City, or Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And there was a second resolution. Is someone wanting to make a motion? I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion on the second resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Willison and a second by City Councilmember Combs to adopt a resolution amending the El Comunal Real downtown specific plan to allow street closures on Santa Cruz Avenue and additional locations to the central plaza identified in the specific plan and allow for street closures on additional streets and alleys in the Pacific, in the specific plan, provided the closures are consistent with the general plan circulation element and would reinforce the urban design framework and the guiding principles of the specific plan. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would imagine we might be seeing some of you on the 29th uh when this, I believe, is coming back for us for that discussion. Um, we are now moving on to L, regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations for city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is L1. Waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter 13.30, streeterries, outdoor dining areas to title 13, streets, sidewalks, and utilities, and amending sections 13.18.10 and 13.18.20 of chapter 13.18, use of public right-of-way. And to introduce this item is our assistant city manager, Steven Stoltay. Mr. Stoltay?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. Um, tonight we will talk about streeterries, outdoor dining areas program. And we will begin with a discussion, a brief discussion of background and existing eligible outdoor uses, a brief summary of business feedback received to date, and then get into the details of our proposed streeterries program, um, including an overview of design standards and the fee structure that you will consider on the 29th as well. Um, in the staff report, there's a much more detailed timeline of the background. But at a high level, in June 2020, the council approved the Temporary Outdoor Use Permits Program, or TOOP, that allowed outdoor dining in the public right-of-way. In January of last year, the council directed staff to research a longer-term outdoor dining option. In January of this year, staff presented a draft outdoor dining design standard packet. And then in February of this year, we um held a study session and the city council provided direction on the streetery program. There are 12 uh current eligible outdoor uses, and this chart displays them. Um, they are all associated with food establishments. There is a mix of sidewalk cafes, parklets in the street, in parking spaces, and um, and more. And you can see the history of some of these outdoor dining um endeavors dating back to even 2015 with the Santa Cruz uh street cafe uh program. Some of the business feedback that we reviewed uh back in February um indicated that existing outdoor dining facility owners are interested in a cost-sharing aspect to a longer-term program. Restaurants are still not fully recovered from the pandemic, and outdoor dining has really helped them stay open. Um, retailers are generally do agree that outdoor dining should continue. And businesses have said that customers do continue to choose outdoor dining over indoor options. So now I will pass it off to our consultant, Kirsten Hines with HDL Companies.
Hello, um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm Kirsten Hines. I am a senior advisor with HDL Companies, the uh city of Menlo Park's economic development consultant. Um, so I'm going to talk about the um streetery, outdoor dining areas ordinance. The um, the streetery ordinance defines streetery or streeterries as uh outdoor, outdoor eating areas that operate within uh public right-of-ways next to food service establishments on the street frontage um and/or operates within a public right-of-way on streets or portions of streets that are closed to vehicle traffic. Uh, the program, the streetery program is intended to activate uh the public realm uh for the city of Menlo Park's downtown and the city as a whole. Um, it's meant to maintain physical and visual access to businesses, uh provide safe, attractive, and accessible spaces um to private businesses, provide um or to the public and, and businesses, and to provide accessible amenity areas um and support local economic vitality for our downtown businesses and for the city. Next slide, please. So streeterries, um, the streetery ordinance identifies a number of things, including um permit, permit requirements, um permit issuance requirements, and some middle requirements. Um, one aspect of the streetery ordinance is uh location criteria. So um, just like it says in the definition, streeterries are allowed in um park, in the public right-of-way and parking spaces um on sidewalks and um within the right-of-way on streets or a portion of streets that have been closed to vehicle traffic. And then some additional um location criteria are that streeterries um have to be on streets that have speed limits of less than 25 miles per hour. They are not permitted in parking spaces with peak hour restrictions, ADA designated spots, um any color parking zones. And they can't block um public safety infrastructure, utility assets, um, or bicycle facilities. Although um if there, if a bicycle parking can be located within 300 feet, then um the streetery could be located where a bike, bicycle facility is, and then the bicycle parking can be relocated. The streeterries have to meet uh traveling and other setback requirements. So they have to be a minimum of uh 18 inches setback from the traveling um unless it is on a, a closed, approved, closed street. Um, and then uh there has to be a clearance of four feet from either side of any public utility. Next slide, please. Some other key features and aspects of the streetery outdoor dining program is um includes the hours of operation, which coincides with the business's hours of operation, unless the um business or streetery is within 150 feet from a residence. Then there are just some additional limitations on um the timeframe that it can be open. Uh, maintenance of the street area utilities and drainage is clearly laid out in the ordinance um and within design standards um that we'll discuss later. Um, the area has to be scrubbed and mopped daily by the permitty, and they have to remove any food or drink stains. Um, and then uh there are specific drainage requirements, and these are set in accordance with the city stormwater management program. And then a permitty, um, the permits are non-transferable. So if there is a change in business where a streetery is permitted or was permitted, then uh the permit would have to be reapplied for. Next slide, please. So the design standards, uh, the, the streetery ordinance uh outlines that the design standards for the program and um fees are to be set by a separate resolutions by the city council. The uh draft design standards and a fee structure were included as attachments to tonight's item, but they will be brought back as separate resolutions um for consideration and approval by council uh with the second reading of this ordinance, so on August 29th. Um, but we outlined um just some key aspects of both the design standards and fee structures. I'm going to talk about um some of the key features of the design standards, which were prepared using examples from uh neighboring cities' outdoor dining programs and um with review and input from the Public Works Department, Transportation Division, and Community Development and Planning Division. Next slide. Thank you. Uh, so one topic of discussion has around outdoor dining has been barrier standardization. Um, so in the design standards, uh barrier standardization is set uh for one in terms of safety, safety standards. So uh there is a force impact rating of 250 pounds. And this is um similar to what other communities are doing with their outdoor dining programs um and the barrier standard, barrier requirements. Um, streeterries have to maintain visibility of pedestrian, bicycle, or vehicle traffic as well as sign, uh, traffic sign signals or other traffic warning devices. And then um the streeterries are required to have reflectors on the corners that are facing the travel lane. So it could be um similar to this example that is on Camper's Parklet, or they could use um retro reflective tape or um retro, retro reflective uh ballards. It's a hard word to say. Um, and then separately, um aesthetic standards are included in the uh design standards as well. So that um sets the materials to be um either wood, concrete, or steel planters. Um, and perforated steel railings are allowed. Um, and we have a few examples of what those look like. Um, so amigies. Um, and we have a few examples of what those look like. Um, so Amici has the concrete planters. Um, and then these other pictures are um just from other communities. There's a steel, steel planters with the perforated railings and then wood planters. The wooden concrete planters have to be finished or painted. And then any colors um and materials that are used should be compatible with the facade of the adjacent building or restaurant. And um that would be reviewed during the um permit review and design review. Next slide, thank you. Um, so to streamline review process for new streeter applications, the design standards include um several design templates. And um, there's, so there's design templates for uh parallel parking spaces for one or two spaces diagonal. Um, and if you go to the next slide, there's um just a few additional, so for parklets and sidewalk cafe streeteries and um parklet slash sidewalk cafe curb extensions. And then for any uh streets that are close to vehicle traffic, there is a template for um parklets in the street as well. So these don't have to necessarily be followed to a T, but um again, it's to help streamline any new applications that come in. There are site plans included um and design templates that applicants can choose from and use based on their situation. And then I'll hand it back to uh Assistant City Manager Stoltay to discuss the permit fees in term.
Okay, thank you. So just a reminder for the design uh standards and the fees that I'm going to talk about now, those resolutions uh to adopt the, the standards and the fees will be considered at the uh August twenty ninth meeting. Tonight, we're seeking feedback on the overall concepts. So in terms of fees, uh we are going to start with um a little bit of rationale of how we arrived at our uh amounts. For the initial permanent permit fee, um for streetery's parklets, it's actually based on the cost of an administrative permit uh for outdoor dining on private property because there's similarities in the review. For a streetery sidewalk cafe, it's based on the cost of a major encroachment permit. For the first year use of space fee, it's based on the average monthly retail rent per square foot. Uh, we researched properties in uh Menlo Park and arrived at four dollars and twenty four cents per square foot on a monthly basis. Using that monthly rate actually creates a discounted uh fee um for the use of space. Annual renewals for both the permits and use of space are uh rounded down just a tiny bit to have an even number and that, you know, they still continue to be a discounted rate. And we will talk about in a couple of minutes our proposed three-year fee waiver where the city would be subsidizing about eighty two thousand dollars for participating um businesses. And here is the chart of our fees. So in the first half of the chart for streetery parklets, you'll notice that the initial permit fee and the use of space fee do decrease in um the annual renewal years. Uh, the parklet permit fee decreases to two hundred and fifty dollars largely to reflect um minimal administrative services the city would provide and reviewing insurance requirements and things like that versus, you know, the design review that goes into the initial permit. Um, use of space, you'll see that it was just rounded down to fifteen hundred dollars. For a streetery, oh, um for a streetery sidewalk cafes, you'll notice the, the same dynamic happening with our fees uh after the first year. On the next slide, you'll see a comparison of uh Menlo Park's proposed fee rates to other cities with outdoor dining programs. And there are four cities in San Mateo County on the, on this list, three in Santa Clara and one in the North Bay. And um, two of the cities in San Mateo County have uh fees that are at rates above our proposal and two are below us. Um, Menlo Park is in the middle of, of those cities and um it's important to note that some cities actually have cleaning fees included. But in our ordinance, we require participating street, uh streetery owners to take care of cleaning. And uh Ms. Hines discussed that earlier. So uh we, we also at the end of that chart, thank you, City Clerk. Um, we, we have calculated the average and median um for both the permit and annual use fees. Next, I wanted to highlight some aspects of the streeteries program focused on business assistance. So this year, we brought on SCFM Design Studio who reviewed existing parklets for compliance against our proposed uh design standards and recommended improvements. And this was really just to help all the existing parklet and sidewalk cafe, cafe owners transition at easier when the long-term program is uh potentially implemented. And then second is the proposed waiver of uh streetery permit fees for businesses that meet our transitional period deadline. So there's the twelve existing outdoor uses for, and we'll talk about the transitional period on the next slide. For businesses that go through that process, um, we would be subsidizing as a city about uh six thousand eight hundred dollars per applicant. This is estimated cost because there is a square footage component of a streetery, so we're just using the typical sizes. And this is our transitional period. So at the August twenty ninth meeting, we will have the second reading of the ordinance if it is adopted. There will be one month uh through the end of September that city staff are getting the application online and notifying existing permit holders uh to get ready to apply. Then there's a three-month period from October through the end of the year where uh the app businesses can apply. And then for all businesses that receive their final inspection and approval by uh the end of June next year, um, they'd be eligible for that um permit fee waiver. So in terms of next stack steps, we are looking for feedback on the design standards and fees. Those resolutions will come to you in two weeks. And then we also uh as staff recommend that the city council introduce the ordinance and amend uh the relevant sections of our code. So we are available for any questions and, and feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltay. Um, so at this time, I think um this is not a public hearing, but I think we will jump to our public comment. So City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Willison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our first regular business item L one, waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter thirteen point three zeros, streeteries, outdoor dining areas to title thirteen and amending sections thirteen point one eight point one zero and thirteen point one eight point two zero of chapter thirteen point one eight. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. All right, and our first speaker will be Elias Blowie.
Again, Elias Blowie. Um, I provided my, many of my comments under the prior item and I, I won't repeat those in general. Other than listening to the presentation, I would put a pretty strong emphasis I, on I do not think you should be picking winners and losers. These are targeted, specific businesses in specific locations. I just don't view that as fair. Um, as an economist, uh by training, I don't support that. Um, watching government policy over the years and clean energy and other things, it's, it is a classic mistake. Winners and losers. How do we justify a handful of restaurants that are in category A and everybody else is in category B? Um, just doesn't compute to me. Um, let me spend the balance of my time actually on uh some of the comments that I heard from council on the prior item and to say that I agree with you. Um, but I'm also, I'm frustrated as a Menlo Park resident. So I'm in a meeting tonight. There is no material back there. I guess I should have brought my laptop. Um, there's no staff reports, no anything. It's actually difficult to follow where you are from having looked before I came down tonight on where you are on the agenda from a web perspective. Um, I agree with you there, that all these items that are interrelated. I received the card in the mail some weeks ago, um or a week or two ago, said, okay. It had the link, go to the staff report. I looked at the staff report and I saw what frankly I've seen all the way back to M two now, which is just this well-intentioned enormous amount of work. And where's the summary? Where is the top-level executive summary in one page that allows me as a Menlo Park resident to participate effectively in my city? It's not there. It's, it's a just god-awful enormously complex stuff. I'm very interested in it, but not to the tune of reading forty pages and seventy pages and seven hundred pages. And then being expected to come to a study session to learn, I cannot, you know, that, that's not an uh prudent investment of time and I really think and I would encourage you to require one-page executive summaries. Having written those in business, they're enormously difficult to write. And the folks in the city are exactly the right people to produce those for us to be more effective in our ability to participate as citizens. Finally, I would say actually to, to uh Councilmember Combs' points, I agree with you and I would say my underlying perspective is to think even bigger picture. So I look at all these subjects and say, why are we incidentally dealing with cars and this, that and the other very static sorts of things in terms of long-term time? I just came back from Europe. They don't have cars. They don't deal with, you know, how do we segregate the cars? Many areas, big towns, small towns. I'd urge us to think all the way out to those levels of going to call it a pedestrian mall sort of a concept, not this year, not next year, but put it in the long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Randy Avalos, and this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item L one.
Uh, good evening, councilors. Uh, this is Randy Avalos, District Five. Um, a great report. The one thing I would be nice to hear from council or staff, just, you know, the, the use of the commons. You know, the nature of a commons, one person's use of it affects another. And this seems really a case of concentrated benefits with a few properties. And the costs are pretty much dispersed across the community, maybe traffic flow. Uh, it would be nice to hear the other side of the story of, you know, well, how is this going to impact the city? Where are these costs laying, given that these the use of the commons and its nature of it? That's all. I'd like to hear that perspective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Willison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you again to our public speakers. Um, so I will now open this item to um council uh questions and discussion. Um, I actually have a question, Mr. Stoltay, about the fees and building off Mr. Blowie's um comment about um, a couple of restaurants um having kind of more space than others. So the annual usage fee is by square foot. Is that just for the parklet or does that also include the restaurants that are operating in the street right now? Does, does that square foot get added in as well?
It's total square footage, so street, parklet, sidewalk cafe on the sidewalk.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, uh, what other questions do my colleagues have? Um, I'll ask another um one. Um, so looking through some of, and this might be more, well, ask Mr. Stoltay. Um, looking through kind of the, what's compliant and recommendations for the various um streeteries that we have in existence. Um, can you provide a rationale for some of the um commentary, particularly around some of the screening, the, the heights? Um, I know various um parklets, you know, were built a while ago. Um, and the uh the documents reflect some of that where it might not be meeting the new standards, but it could be grandfathered in because there's no issue with it. Um, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking is um beyond kind of safety, visibility or some like egregious aesthetic issue, how are those um standards being um administered? Um, because some of them seem a bit arbitrary about heights and, and things like that and types of screening. Oh, hello there. Yes, please. Thank you for coming on screen or Mr. Stoltay or whoever.
I, yeah. I can go ahead and answer that. Um, there's a few, um, there's a few sections within the ordinance that give the public work structure discretion to um deviate from um what the rules of regulation said. Um, and let me try and find one. So within the location criteria, um, there's one um allowance for the public work director to um deviate from these rules. But there's certain criteria that they, the streetery would still have to meet um for her, for the public work director to make that decision. And then there's sort of an overarching um section that calls out deviations from adopted standards. And again, there's um a few criteria, like if, if the applicant can't meet, if there's uh the strict um application of the standards can't be met by the proposed streetery. Um, and then they, the streetery could deviate from the adopted standards. So I know there are a few um kind of really minor uh deviations from what the ordinance calls out and what we have uh in the design standards that existing parklets um currently have. It wouldn't be a safety issue at all, and so the um public works director could make the call to say that could be allowed.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Nash?
So I have a number of more detailed questions, which feel free to say we can do that offline. Um, but the first question is um on wind barriers, why are they transparent and um supposed to be thirty-six inches or less? If I read and took my notes correctly, and I guess I'm just, I'm what, there's a, there's a number of um very specific requirements and such as the height of the lights, um, the height of planters, the height of the, the wind barriers. Um, and I guess I'm to me, what I'm most concerned about is safety and um when something obstructs the visibility from the street where it's actually going to be a um issue for pedestrians, bikes, cars. Absolutely, I can understand that, but it's, um, my impression is that some of it is something that may be considered aesthetic or um, I'm just, I guess I'm, I'm looking for what is the purpose of some of these um requirements? Because to me, um, it's both as a passerby and as a person sitting in one of the parklets, it seems like um a little more a little less visibility and more um just coziness feels better than having um so much visibility to the street and um acceptance situations where it's a safety um visibility issue.
So one, one thing that we could consider in the design standards is taking a look at where visibility really matters at, you know, intersections and corners and um adjusting a bit the, the standards to really kind of hone in in those specific areas and maybe other businesses further from those safety concerns could, you know, have taller landscaping and things like that. So that, that is something we could look at in the final design standards that come in a couple of weeks.
That makes a lot of sense and then definitely they need to be well-maintained, the, whatever is out there. And then um another question was on um page L one point three four, crosswalk and bullback setbacks. Um, it says parklets must be located at least twenty feet from the nearest boundary edge of the crosswalk closest to the parklet. I don't think that works with, I, I think that recludes some of the current parklets from having space. And on one hand, um, I think there's several parklets that actually need to there needs to be more visibility for crosswalks and intersections, um, but twenty feet seems excessive. So I guess I would just request that that, there is a, another, a second look at that.
We can do that.
Thank you. And then based on the comments tonight, I would appreciate if we could see a fee structure that would both be subsidized and non subsidized. So we could see what the two of those would look like if other council members are interested in that. So I will let someone else go now.
Yeah, actually, I have some follow up questions from Councilmember Nash. So thinking about the public comment as well. So if a new parklet were to be built in this transition, if a restaurant came forward that doesn't currently have a parklet and they wanted to have a parklet in this transitionary period, would they get the same subsidy as our existing parklets? Or would they be subject to paying from the get go?
So as proposed, the subsidy is for businesses that have invested significant amount of resources in their current parklet construction. So we're, that's what the subsidy is in recognition of. So if a new business was to apply for a brand new parklet, as proposed, the subsidy would not apply to that business. However, we can take feedback from council on on that as well.
Well, I'm just thinking about the comment about some people getting an advantage that others don't have. And I know that a lot of these businesses went through quite horrible few years. And that I appreciate the sentiment. I also know we don't want to use tons of taxpayer dollars to subsidize, but in fairness, to kind of address the some are winning more than others issue. It might be something just to look at and think of some kind of use cases of what if somebody came along? And how fair would that be? And what might be a fair, if there is something that we want to add? And I, I do feel comfortable with some of these subsidies because I think that the feedback I've received from residents about the parklets and about outdoor dining downtown is is really positive. And I think it really adds to the community feel and bringing people together. So I think that's a worthy use of our taxpayer dollars to invest in those community spaces. But to the point of, you know, are some getting kind of a windfall while others aren't? If you could just look into that a little bit more, that'd be great.
We can do that.
Thank you.
So when I was referring to subsidies, I'm not just speaking of the waivers, which are easy to figure out how much that's worth. But I'm also thinking of the discounted rate and perhaps having several discounted rates for council to see or arrange whatever so that we actually do see what is the value of the space versus what we are planning to charge. And I personally think that we will probably end up doing some discount. But just if we could see a few examples, maybe of what would be different, different rates.
We can certainly do that. And and one way that we would address that as a starting point is just the the average retail rent per square foot. You know, we use that monthly rate, but the obviously the annual rate is much higher. So we can show you those numbers and there there could be somewhere in between that we would land. And we have the examples of two other cities in San Mateo County that have rates that are higher than the current proposed rates too. So that's something to look at.
That's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. So two questions. One, just want to understand that like, because this certainly became an issue with, I think, a couple of establishments or at least one amplified sound. And so that is still a separate process. Do, can businesses do that simultaneously with the this request? Or or does that have to come after the fact in some fashion? Or how does that that work?
Currently, in the, in our regulate, proposed regulations, businesses would have to take a separate process for amplified amplified sound. I'm not entirely clear on if it could be at the same time or not. I would, I would assume we would accept their their request for for review on that at the same time. But I can check with staff and and get back to you.
Okay, cool. I mean, I mean, you, you can only get back to me if it's something different than what you said. If it's what you said, then then we're good. And then my, my second question is, and maybe this was an explanation I just missed. But so why are we excluding non food businesses? Is is there like a legal reason or policy reason or regulatory reason? Why? Because currently now in some non food businesses do have these streeteries. The the running shoe store, Fleet Feet comes to mind. I think that they're like some, an art gallery too, I think, maybe. And so, so is there a reason why we haven't included them here? And maybe that's obvious to everyone but me.
It is my general understanding, and please correct me if you have a different recollection of this, that we were just mainly focused on restaurants and creating outdoor dining options. Because there was strong demand for outdoor dining from customers and residents, visitors, et cetera. But we can certainly pursue other business types if that's of interest.
Well, for me, it wouldn't be pursuing. It would be about giving them the option, right? Because as I understand it now, you're saying that they don't even have the option. And so if we're going back to Mr. Blowey's point of picking winners and losers and this becomes, again, I don't want to sort of weigh this process down. I know we're, we're far along with it. But it, I I would be interested in not having specifically a restriction that says that you, you, if you're not a food establishment, then you don't, you don't get get access to this. And I imagine for most non food establishments, the economics probably won't pan out. But I think that that's different than sort of saying, just no, you can't, you can't do this.
I just wanted to add to in the design standards that we'll come back to council later. There's a mention of user, usage of streetery space and just making sure that the streetery is the businesses using it adequately and it's not sitting empty. And I think that was one concern or conversation that came up about retail businesses using parking spaces is that they're not using it as frequently as a restaurant would. So that was, I I believe I remember that coming up at the study session.
Yeah, I'm, I'm conflicted about the retail space outside. It's always felt, to be honest, a little strange to me unless we were doing like a closed total passeo and it was like a outdoor, like street bear vibe. So I'm okay with it for some reason, singling out, because I feel like a restaurant is more like a community gathering. I don't know if like a shoe store is like where community comes and has like a feel. Maybe if it were a different type of, if it were like a art classes outside or some things. I don't know. I I I would be curious to know what it would look like if you expanded it, but I don't know if I want you to pursue it. So that's my initial thought on the idea, but. Councilmember Dor.
Thank you. And I just want to appreciate some of the comments that have been made so far. Councilmember Nash, I really appreciate your questions about aesthetic requirements. And I just echo support for looking at reducing as many, you know, reducing the requirements if they are not supportive of safety. So thinking about the height of planters, wind barriers and lights. Also supportive of looking at the twenty feet separation from crosswalks. And I also appreciate Councilmember Combs' comment about opening it up to the potential for non food businesses to explore this. But also here, Mayor Nash, uh, Mayor, sorry, Mayor Wilson, the need to ensure that that space is utilized. And maybe to Councilmember Combs' point that the economics might look, look in a way for a business that they decide it's not, doesn't make sense. But could we at least create an opening there to make sure everyone is benefiting equally downtown? And one business that comes to mind right now is the CVS space that is in the Von Marche area, has access to tables and outdoor space, has food, but is not a restaurant in the same way. And they're able to have this nice little outdoor space outside of their retail store. But other stores under this new rule would not be allowed that space. And so I would be supportive of opening it up to non food businesses.
Sounds good. So I think there's consensus to, do you have any comments about looking into that?
Yes, I would just say that our current ordinance is very specific to food establishments. So it would be a, you know, a longer timeline to come back and bring back more options for additional business types. But we can certainly look into it. I just want to make you aware of the timeline.
Yes, so since I brought this up, I I don't want to, I register my, my concern that this this should be opened up. It won't cause me to vote against this. But I would say, even if if the current state under the emergency ordinance or what we did on the emergency ordinance does allow for non, non, you know, non food establishments. And so for me, that's like the benchmark I'm I'm working with. But I do appreciate and understand that, like, opening it up to non food categories. It might slow the process, or at least I I will defer to your expertise on that and believe you. And so, but but I I think I've registered for the record my concern. And and I think, I think we'll, at this point, I've not heard from any non food establishments. And so I, I'm not going to fight a fight that it's not clear.
Curious how others feel, because I certainly, I don't feel strongly about it. So and I'm also curious to know what the consequence would be. Are we in a rush to pass this? Because we're doing a first reading tonight. So is there a timing issue? If we delay it, is there a ripple effect and whatnot? So that might help decide how strongly we all feel about whatever.
Yeah, our recommendation is to move forward tonight with the sidewalk dining because we continue to operate in this place of limbo. And so with respect to ongoing businesses of outdoor dining, we could make the, we'd recommend you make those changes tonight. We could always come back and modify the ordinance to include other types of businesses. We did just look through the ordinance and we think there are probably too many revisions that would be necessary to do that from the dais tonight. But certainly something we could come back with.
Thank you, Ms. Dordi. And Councilmember Nash has something to say.
So I'm wondering, as we implement this, perhaps we can just have a list of any businesses that might be interested? And we can see if they're actually, if it would be even worth the effort to do that. And then if there's, I have another question, and that's about, I think one of the one, one of the, well, I will say, I think one of the wonderful things about our current setup is some of them are all weather. And it's actually been a very pleasant place to be in the rain, to eat out in the fresh air and personally. And I'm wondering, I couldn't tell from the my read of the document whether all weather just requires, if someone wants a roof, does that just require an extra level of just an extra step to make sure that it's all safe? Or is that actually discouraged?
It does require just extra review of the structure. It's not discouraged.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, I remember reading, I keep looking for it, some narrative in the staff report about Fleet Feet and Chitane, I don't know how to pronounce that store. On page one point three. So there, what, there was outreach to those stores. Can you remind me what the, what they thought of continuing operation?
I'm happy to let Ms. Heinz take this one. I know that we can permit the farmer's market under a different method, you know, a special events permit. So that, but in terms of the other businesses, if Ms. Heinz wants to take that.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So I did speak with Fleet Feet and Chitane about their parklets and Fleet Feet. They, they used it, there's quite a bit during COVID and did try ons and had some of their items out on the parklet during COVID. They, they said they started using it less when, you know, the environment started getting better and relating to COVID. And they, they did like using it for, they had, they have a run group and they would meet in the mornings. So there were some benefits to it to them, but they they didn't use it frequently and they acknowledged that. And the same went for Chitane. They, they hadn't really used it that often. They, they had, I think, a table and maybe two chairs out there and kind of used it as a little seating space. But they, they were okay with the idea for moving in.
Okay, so they both have been notified that the current, that the new ordinance will not include that. And neither of them came here tonight or expressed major concern. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think then it sounds like the councils reached consensus to move forward with the ordinance, the first reading, and then to direct staff to possibly look into coming back at some point with some information about interest in in retail to to do a modification to an ordinance. I'm looking to Councilmember Combs or Councilmember Nash for.
I I I would just say, let's keep her to the ground, like, right? And be be open if we hear some feedback from, from, you know, retailers that that they're, they would be interested in in using this. And then obviously sharing with them what that might look like as far as cost and and then, you know. But other than that, I'm not asking for any future action.
Perfect. Okay, Councilmember Nash?
So I have one other question that I'd like to see as we come back, and that's with Carpaccio and Ryan's Lane. There's with Clark Seafood opening up, I know there's going to be construction. And how would, you know, is that something that's feasible with the barriers and just is it feasible? So we were making a decision on good information.
We, we can provide more information on that.
Um, all right. So is there a motion then to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance for streeteries outdoor dining? Okay, Councilmember Nash is making the motion and Councilmember Combs is seconding.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash, a second by City Councilmember Combs to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding chapter thirteen point thirty, streeteries ordinance dining areas to the title thirteen and amending sections thirteen point eighteen point ten and thirteen point eighteen point twenty of chapter thirteen point eighteen. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dover?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. We are now moving on to our second regular business item, which is L two. Consider and adopt a resolution approving one appraisal instructions for determining the value of community amenities. And two, community amenity implementing regulations to determine the appraised value of bonus level developments. And once again, we have our planning manager, Kyle Prada, to introduce this item.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again, Mayor Wilson and members of the city council. Give me one second here to bring up my presentation. All right, thank you. So this is working. All right, so good evening again. So for this item, this is the update to the appraisal instructions for bonus level development and proposed community amenity implementing regulations. And so just an agenda for staff's presentation here this evening. So we'll start with a background on community amenities. These are the two items before the city council this evening are related to the community amenities ordinance that was adopted this evening under consent as the waiving of the second reading. As there is a connection there to to a previous item as well. Staff will go through the proposed process updates. And so these are two specific items, the updated appraisal instructions for determining the value of community amenities. And I'll go into that in a little bit more detail later, the staff report. The staff report does contain the majority of the detail though. And then the second item is creating or approving this evening potentially proposed community amenity implementing regulations. So the appraisal instructions currently exist. This would be an update. The implementing regulations would be new. And so what staff is looking for from the council is a discussion and potentially an action to adopt a resolution. It can be a single resolution for this item to approve the updated instructions or appraisal instructions and implementing regulations. So a little bit of background, so the community amenities comes out of the Connect Menlo General Plan update. So that update from 2016 created three new zoning districts in the Bayfront area, the Office, Life Sciences, and the Residential Mixed Use Zoning Districts. As part of those districts, there was an allowance for bonus level development, which would be an increase in potentially floor ratio or gross floor area square footage density. So dwelling units or height in exchange for the provision of community amenities. And the ordinance specifies that the required amenity value is 50% of the appraised value of the bonus level development. And so that is the difference between the proposed project at the bonus level and a base level project. So it's 50% of that increased value. So as part of that, the project would have to provide a community amenity. And so that requirement is either an on or off-site physical amenity from the adopted list. And so the council did recently adopt a new or updated community maze list as July 11th meeting that is currently in effect. And then the other alternative would be a payment of in-lut fee. What's not listed here, though, is that there's also an opportunity for applicants to enter into a development agreement for negotiated amenities, not on the adopted list or the payment of an in-lut fee. Just from context here, the Bayfront Area zoning, so the zoning districts that I identified earlier are the O, which is in blue, the RMU Residential Mixed Use, which is in orange, and then the Life Sciences, which is a much lighter blue in the kind of bottom right side of the shaded Bayfront area. All right, so a couple items for, for background here as well as the community amenity process. So there have been a number of updates throughout the years. And so beginning in October of 2020, the city council created an ad hoc subcommittee to review the community amenities related to bonus level development. And through a study session in April of 2021, the city council recommended the following items. And so the first item, adopt or revise community maze list. That was recently adopted in July of this year, just a month ago on July 11th. The second option was to, or item from that study session was to adopt an in-lut payment option for applicants. That was adopted back in June of 2021. The third item on the list here is to adopt a gatekeeper or what we've been calling more recently a screening process for applicants. And so that is on the agenda tonight as part of those community many implementing regulations. They would include that requested application screening process. And then the fourth is to establish a community maze working group, which we do not have an identified timeline for at this point. So the two items before the council, the first one is the updated appraisal instructions. And so the staff report does provide much more detail. And then the actual appraisal instructions are included in Exhibit A to Attachment A. But it's a high-level summary. What the appraisal instructions are proposed to do is to identify uniform criteria for determining the value of bonus level development. The revisions are really focused on clarifying specific definitions, terminology, criteria for base and bonus level development that should be included in appraisals. And then also the updated appraisal instructions would, would be used by the applicant's appraisers. And then, as we'll get into later, the city's appraiser to ensure compliance with the required form and content and an apples-to-apples comparison of appraisals. And so the proposed community many implementing regulations, they have a couple of main goals here that will summarize. Once again, the staff report provides more detail on the proposed regulations and the, the text of the regulations are included in Exhibit B to Attachment A. But the goals of the proposed regulations are really to identify the bonus level development value early on in the review process and create a uniform appraisal review and screening process. And so it's not outlined on the slide here, but in the staff report does outline that the proposed process would be for the applicant to submit an appraisal, the city to then commission its own appraisal. And there's a process by which the value would be determined as the median between the, or the midpoint between the, the appraised values. And then there's an, a process in place in case there needs to be a third-party appraisal review based on the difference between the appraised values. And so it's outlined in more detail in the report. Happy to answer questions about that. Effectively, the, the, those regulations create kind of a timing and review process, clear outlined requirements, including the city's review process and timelines. And then the third main goal of the regulations is to include that city council screening meeting. And staff has developed the proposed regulations to include that meeting prior to the release of the notice of preparation for the project-level environmental analysis for bonus level development projects. For the settlement agreement with the city of East Palo Alto, all bonus level development projects require an EIR in the Bayfront area and those three zoning districts I identified earlier. It should be noted, though, that if the regulations are adopted tonight by the city council, the regulations would not apply to existing applications on file for bonus level development. And then the regulations on, for existing projects for their housing development projects and proposed housing development projects in the future would not apply. That's due to a, a meeting limitation under Senate Bill 330 that, that would conflict with the, the screening meeting. And so as I mentioned previously, the implementing regulations are in detail in, in the full form in Attachment A, Exhibit B. And tonight, the, the recommended actions for the city council is to consider and adopt a resolution in Attachment A of the staff report to approve the appraisal instructions for determining the value of community amenities and the community many implementing regulations for use in determining the value as well as the community amenity value and the process for a screening meeting. And so that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. I think at this time we will go to public comment. Please, Ms. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Woolison. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item L2, consider and adopt a resolution approving, one, appraisal instructions for determining the value of community amenities and two, community amenity implementing regulations to determine the appraised value of bonus level developments. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item L2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Woolison, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Opening up this item for council questions and discussion? Anyone have anything? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to staff. This is a really excellent process, a very complicated. You've really simplified the process from a very complicated situation. So thank you. I do have a couple requests and that is, in order to allow sufficient time for public input before the community amenities study session, is it possible to have the staff report released 15 days early in the same way that the labor reports are released? So that we have, the community and council has 15 days to review community amenity proposals.
Yes, if the council would like, we can, we can certainly modify the regulations to include that requirement.
If, if the staff is supportive of that, I'm supportive.
Appreciate the opportunity to, to respond. I think ultimately that that's a policy decision for the city council. You know, certainly staff can work with the timelines to release the report earlier. So we can certainly accommodate that and would support that if, if that's the council's request.
I'm seeing nods. So is that something that needs to be in the motion or is that just direction?
Yeah, we like that in the motion and I'll note that that would be a revision to Section 3B, 3A of the regulations.
Would that slow down a project? Or would that, I'm just trying to think of any unintended consequences of that.
Yeah, I certainly can, can provide a response there. I think it certainly may have some timing implications, but ultimately I think it comes down to city staff and the applicant team working together on a schedule to determine when the project would be ready for review of the screening meeting and just building that extra time into the release of the staff report. And if, so it certainly can be accommodated with, you know, minimal delay to the overall project. If you're talking about, you know, 10-ish days in terms of the release date change.
Okay, so I'm, I'm seeing nods of support. So whoever makes the motion, it sounds like, could put that in there.
Thank you. And hopefully that will mean that we don't have any delays down the road. The other question that I have is about a feedback loop to council and the public if there, when there are adjustments to the community amenities after the study session. And I know I talked to staff about a few ways to do that, but I don't think we settled on anything. So just, if there is a way to, basically it would be good to, again, to make sure that the public and council is fully aware of what the community amenity is as proposed. Any, if there are adjustments after the study session, that we are given that information. Asking for another meeting, just that the information is circulated.
I think we can look at some modifications to, I'm trying to find the right section and maybe the city attorney, Ms. Doherty, might have an idea. But we can certainly accommodate that in the regulations, just looking for the right location.
Yeah, I'd recommend we make a modification to Section 3B. Something between 3B3, 3B3 and 3B4 to add a statement that in circumstances where the proposed community amenity is modified between the community amenities hearing or community amenities proposal hearing and final community amenities proposal, staff would provide an informational item on a city council agenda describing such modifications.
I'm seeing nods. Okay, great.
One last similar request, which I didn't realize until you were doing your presentation. And that's in the situation where we have a housing proposal where there is not going to be a study session because of the limited number of meetings. It would be also good to get the feedback, what the proposed, what the community amenities proposal is, please. Is that something that also needs to get into the ordinance?
Can you, can you say it again?
So in the situation where we have a housing proposal, a community amenities proposal, which does not come to council for a study session because of the limited number of meetings, that council and the public is notified of what the community amenity proposal is at some point, appropriate point in the process.
I, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Prada if he agree, disagrees. But because these regulations don't apply to housing development projects at all, it might be confusing to add a regulation regarding housing development projects to the regulations. It might be leaner to just provide direction to staff to do that. If the city manager and the community development department are okay with that.
So, yes, community development would support that. I think just to also reiterate in terms of the process. So the housing development project still needs to go through a public review process. So there still would be notification to the community of the required meetings that SB 330, the state law, allows the city to take a project through, which would include, you know, as appropriate when available, the, the community amenity proposal. So there would be that opportunity for the community to weigh in at certain points in the process. There are limitations, though, on what can and can't be requested to be changed for a housing development project. And just to clarify, though, the further the appraisal or the community many implementing regulations do apply to housing development projects in terms of the process for the appraisal and determinative value, but not the step regarding the community maze screening process for future housing development projects, not currently filed housing development projects.
Understood. Thank you. So essentially the intent is just for notification and that would be excellent if it could be folded into one of the meetings where people could make comment if that's even appropriate.
Yeah, we can, we can work with that. Thanks.
Thank you.
City Manager Murphy, I saw you grabbing the microphone. Was there anything you wanted to add? No. Okay. Councilmember Door, I see your hand raised.
I have a curiosity regarding Councilmember Nash's request on the modification. If there's a modification before the final proposal goes forward, you asked that it maybe be added to our agenda packets. Knowing how long those are, I'm curious, not to put the weight on our planning commission, but wondering if there is a feedback mechanism with the commission that could be useful at all. It does come to the city council. Thank you.
So I, I believe that the community amenities should stay with the council, at the council level.
But it sounds like it's, the intent is to put it as an info item.
Exactly right. It is not something that needs to be scheduled. It's strictly an info item. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash, is there anything else? I always appreciate your detail-oriented brain. Vice Mayor Taylor, was there anything? Councilmember Combs? Councilmember Door, anything else? Is there a motion? Because it's gotten, I believe there's two specific additions and then a direction that we were talking about. So Vice Mayor Taylor, do you want to do that?
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve the appraisal instructions for determining the value of community amenities. Is this two separate motions or is this one? Just one. Thank you. I'll start again. Make the motion to approve the appraisal instructions for determining the value of community amenities and community amenities implementing, implementing regulations to determine the appraised value of bonus level development. And in the motion, I am including some modifications to 3.3 as far as when the staff report is released. Remember the number of days. Is it 10 days? 15 days? And the second was a, a feedback loop that will be determined to make sure the council stays informed. And then provide direction to make sure that when there are housing projects, that that information is made available to the council as an info item.
So just confirming with the city attorney and Mr. Prada that that direction, that motion and subsequent direction was clear and, and well captured. And City Clerk Karen as well. And City Manager Murphy.
I guess, yeah, this is where I would appreciate the clarification. I did not hear that, that the, the housing items would be through an info item. I thought it was through some other notifications. I think it would be good to clarify.
the housing items would be through an info item. I thought it was through some other notifications. I think it would be good to clarify that now, whether the housing projects would be notified of the city council through an info item or not. Because it's it's a little hard for us to keep track of these directions as as time evolves. So that's that's where I have a little bit of hesitancy of direction. So.
City Manager Murphy, we will leave that to staff.
Okay, so we'll figure out the, I think as Mr. Prada was saying earlier, we'll figure out a notification loop. It may or may not be an info item because I think in that instance, probably not right for as an info item. Okay, thank you.
So Vice Mayor Taylor has made a motion. Is there a second?
I would be happy to second.
Fabulous. We have a motion, a second. City Clerk Karen, please.
Thank you, Mayor Williston. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Taylor and a second by city council member Nash to adopt a resolution approving the following. Appraisal instructions to determine the value of community amenities under bonus level zoning in the O, LS and RMU zoning districts in the Bayfront area to clarify definitions and appraisal criteria. And community amenity implementing regulations that standardize the application procedures, appraisal review process and determination of the value of the bonus level development and the and identify the process of timing for screening of the applicant's community amenity proposal with the city council and update regulation three three B to include a 15 day early staff report release and update regulations three V three and or three V four modifications from hearing to proposal to be added to an agenda as an information item and notify the city council and members of the public of housing projects. Any further city council question or discussion?
Seeing none by roll call vote. City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dower?
Yes.
Mayor Williston?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again to staff. I completely agree with City Councilmember Nash that you took an incredibly complicated process and really worked through it to aid all parties involved. So thank you for this effort. I hope it'd pay off. I think I think it will. All right, we are now moving on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Williston. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items M one, city council agenda topics, M two, trans middle of city attorney billing, M three, short term rental compliance update. Please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please fill out a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Our first speaker will be Pam Jones. And Pam, if you can let us know which item you are speaking on.
Hello, this is Pam Jones and I'm speaking on attachment A, the tentative city council agenda. The I have the comment I have is I I really like it as a tool. I'm wondering if the public can't be reminded that it's there. So there's maybe not so much angst about when something's going to be on on an agenda. They can, because there's people that don't know it's there or don't know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, final call for public comment on our informational items M one through M three. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Williston, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Are there any council questions or comments on any of the informational items? Not seeing any. So we are going to move on to end city managers' report. Good evening, City Manager Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I know it's been a few few weeks since the last council meeting, I think just about a month ago. So I hope that everybody was able to enjoy some respective breaks. And now we're back in in the mix with a number of city council meetings. We do have back to back to back city council meetings as has been discussed earlier tonight. So next Tuesday is a special city council meeting specific to zoning related to the implementation requirements associated with the housing element. And so there was a planning commission meeting on Monday night. A lot of the material is going to be similar. So as was referenced previously, there's pretty thick done staff report about that. Well, we'll be, it's all good information. We'll be working on ways to help make that more easily digestible for the public for next Tuesday. The bulk of the staff report will not be different. What we're going to focus on from a staff perspective is what the feedback was from the planning commission, how to kind of frame that for the council's discussion next Tuesday. So I do encourage people to tune in to that item next Tuesday, the 22nd on the housing element and the zoning for increased densities that's related to dwelling units per acre, height, floor area ratios, everything associated with accommodating additional housing in town, in particular affordable housing. So it's an important topic next Tuesday. And we do have our regular city council meeting August 29th. And as was mentioned in the most recent public comment, there is the look ahead of tentative agenda items. Our look ahead that we provide is for multiple meetings. So we don't specifically do the look ahead on exactly a future meeting because things do to change in terms of their availability to move forward. So it what that agenda item does include is the the realm of things that were known as of last week when the agenda for this meeting was published, of things that could be on upcoming council agendas, I think, through a meeting in in September. So it's considered a look ahead. So that's a good reminder that 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 does exist on every single or every single regular city council meeting that there's that look ahead. So that's a good tool for people to to tune into. And then I'll turn to some fun stuff related to the city's summer concert series, which is coming to an end. So tomorrow night, it's the Sun Kings, a Beatles tribute band at Fremont Park. And then on Friday, Carl E. Clark Park is a Busta Groove playing R and B in Motown. Both of those, I believe, start at six o'clock. So that's the end of the summer concert series tomorrow night, Wednesday and Friday night. So those are updates for for this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. And it's great that we had our summer concert series in full swing. I also know I heard great feedback about National Night Out. So I want to thank our police chief and our police department for going out in the community. And now I'd like to see if any of my colleagues have any city council member reports. I know we were on a break and a lot of our meetings were on pause. Anyone? Yeah, I think it's been a a reentry for all of us to come back to business. And with that, we managed to get through our first meeting back. It's eight forty three and I am adjourning this meeting. Thank you.